Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call today's, uh, for October nineteenth, the meeting of the planning commission. Our first, uh, order of business tonight is to adopt an agenda. Uh, I know there's been some, uh, discussion, commentary about the agenda as it's presented, because we do have several matters of kind of long-term old business to attend to and in addition, uh, the more general topic of this bike and recreation path proposal. Uh, but in the interest of, uh, continuing to deal with the emerging public needs that arise and recognizing that there may be a deadline associated with this, uh, effort for grant applications and the like, uh, I would suggest, gentlemen, that we keep this item at the beginning of the agenda. It will be a limited ten-minute time session, uh, and then we can move on to the more, uh, likely to be extensive discussions of the other topics. So, uh, those are my thoughts on the matter, but I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor? Uh, so we do not have meetings, I don't know if people generally know, I know I just learned that, uh, Ms. Roth has recently broken her arm, so we're a little, um, limited in our staff resources, she's unable to type, so we do not have minutes from our last meeting to approve this evening. Uh, so without, uh, further ado, let me just mention that the public comment session, the first one at least, will be after the first matter of the presentation on the proposed, uh, bike and recreation path. So with that, I will turn it over to our presenters.
I'm Jane Goodfield. I live in the Ryan's District, Jackson District, and Cliff Miller, I think most of you know. So, thank you so much for, uh, giving us this opportunity to tell you a little bit about a project we've been working on. And again, it's an informational session, certainly happy to answer any questions or give you any more information than we can. Uh, but this is a really exciting project. Uh, we've been talking about it, uh, both myself and our planning group and with many plant, um, community members for the last year or so, and in July, we got a little more focused on it. So if we could go to the first slide. Uh, so the vision is to have a county-wide multi-use trail, we're calling it a recreational path, and the reason we're calling it a recreational path as opposed to a bike trail is because a multi-use trail is intended for all out, uh, all residents to be able to enjoy the outdoors through walking, biking, jogging, um, and being out in a safe environment that's separate in a separate path from the road. That's, uh, many, uh, multi-use trails or wider trails, in fact, our, our vision may be to include some bike shoulder lanes and some other types of trails, but the heart of the path will be a multi-use path, which means a eight-to-ten-foot standalone path off the road. Uh, it's for access for enjoy, to enjoy the outdoors for everyone, it's increasing our health and fitness. I think, um, all of you are aware that Rappahannock, um, has needed to begin, um, work on its health and fitness, fitness, access to health and fitness. It's to enhance community and the quality of life, a place for gathering and socializing. Uh, and what I really love about it, I, I, this idea came to me last year, and I know there were past, um, efforts, is because my grandchildren were visiting and we didn't have anywhere to take them safely out on the road to go for a bike ride or a walk. And so many communities are doing this, and our vision would be to link our villages and link our people, um, through this path. I mentioned that we've had a planning group that started meeting in July, and, um, just for those of you who can't see this, uh, we, we have some of our members here. Hi, Jan. Thank you for coming. Patricia Brennan, Van Carney, Debbie Donahue, Stan Ture, oh, Gary, huh, sorry, nice. Um, Jan McCalla, Don McCaslin, Cliff, Steph Ritter, Ashley Cannon Sharp and myself. I think you'll probably recognize some of these names. And then we have many other people in the community who've come forward and wanted to help with the project. Um, there are several funding sources available. Uh, we've, both Cliff and I have done extensive research on this. Um, just for your information, I am a nonprofit consultant and I've been in fundraising, nonprofit community development for thirty years. I have a company that does that, um, which I am leveraging for this project at no cost to the community. Um, and so we found funding sources, trails like this all around the state and around the country have been funded up to ninety percent by state and federal funds. Um, we have a foundation grant opportunity coming up, which you mentioned, uh, I know you were aware of, Gary, and I'll talk about that in a second, and we will reach out, um, to private donors, but no county funds will be used for this trail project. And I'm going to turn it over to Cliff to talk about the first segment. Again, thinking about a county-wide project, we're talking about something that could be thirty miles, uh, long, and it's when it's completed years from now, but you have to start somewhere.
Yeah, so Jane asked me to, um, kind of help with this project, and my first thought was working to get kind of our most bang for the buck, and by connecting Washington and Sperryville, two-eleven's a mythical place to ride a bike, I've done it, it's not much fun. Uh, by connecting those two, we connect an awful lot of retail businesses, um, breakfast restaurants, uh, retail shops, and it also could run by the schools, which I think would be a huge asset, uh, allows kids to ride at school and just kind of link them up to a more healthy network. So, I like the idea of starting there, and as we began to think about how do we, how could we conceivably build this thing, I started to look at VDOT, um, and I, I called them and I worked with several of the local VDOT planners, and kind of what we're looking at is, when they expanded from two to four lanes, they really gave themselves a wide berth for their right-of-way, and they, there's a whole lot of room on the kind of southeast side of two-eleven that's within VDOT's right-of-way that could be used for a recreation trail like this, stacks of maps and everything. But they've been supportive, um, it's, it's on their agenda to help people with this stuff, they've got a planner for, specifically for kind of recreational trail planning. There, I don't think we'll be pigeonholed into any one way of doing this, uh, we can use VDOT land without building it to VDOT specs, or we could build it to VDOT specs if we decided, hey, that makes sense, and I think there's a whole lot of kind of construction choices down the road. Uh, but what I continued to hear from them was, you've got to get it into your comprehensive plan. For us to support you, it just, there needs to be language in your, in your comprehensive plan that says, this community supports the idea of recreational trails. And that's part of the reason why we're here tonight, to talk to this panel about this and Debbie about this. If we can get some language in there, you know, really at no cost to the county at all, it will say to them, okay, well, we can get on board. There's a big VDOT, um, kind of fund for things like this, we'd be applying for a grant likely from them, and also from DCR, and those are kind of the, the big federal funds. There's a lot of private companies that, you know, nonprofits that support this kind of thing, where we'd be going for funds as well. But that would be a huge start to get some kind of language into our comprehensive plan that would, that said, hey, this, this community supports this, this type of thing. It wouldn't pigeonhole us into using VDOT funds or even if we found other ways other than using VDOT's right-of-way, but this seemed to be kind of the least invasive way to do this. So I guess, you want to take questions?
Sure, let's take a look, there are a couple more slides.
Okay.
Uh, this is just a, a kind of initial projected route. Cliff and I did meet with Donna Matthews, um, and hear a little bit about the, the plans that they have underway for the schools. We talked about some routes that might be able to connect, um, the path to the high school and the elementary school and some of the concerns and opportunities that she would have there, um, around safety and access and timing, that sort of thing. It was a very interesting and, and helpful conversation. We also have a brief with Pertner on a couple of grant applications, and in part, in fact, I just signed a, um, letter of support for her from our informal planning group for a grant that they're bringing in for a pathway from the elementary school to the school board building. Um, so this is a, uh, just a sample map of, uh, of the Sperryville route. Uh, so there are some considerations, these considerations are, uh, ones that come up for every trail planning, uh, project. We've done extensive research about trails both here in Virginia and, um, in, around the country. Safety is a consideration that comes up often, and there are, um, there's, uh, safety in terms of, uh, hiking, biking, walking along major roads. Um, there are federal highway administration guidelines that go along with that, we're aware of the guidelines. Um, for example, along a fifty-five mile per hour zone, it must be twenty feet from the road, or you must have a, an approved barrier. Um, we're, we're working with that and we're aware of that. Security, concerns about trash, vandalism and crime come up often. There are extensive reports now, in fact, there's one from, that was done in New Hampshire recently, um, on the impact of trails on those issues, and they found to be much less than, uh, first anticipated, and so there is research available, um, on that. And as we talked about with Donna, fencing will be installed where needed to provide safety, for example, a barrier from the schoolyard. Parking and restrooms, um, wonderful partner here, Cliff Miller, has said that the schoolhouse at Sperryville is a terrific parking lot and a public restroom, um, and the plan is to connect the Washington side of the, um, of this, this first leg with the county park, which also has, uh, public, um, parking and public restrooms. So we would have parking and restrooms at two key spots. And then finally upkeep, uh, we will form a nonprofit foundation to manage volunteers for trash collection and general upkeep and to raise funds for maintenance. Again, this is a model that has been used throughout Virginia and throughout the country. Next steps, uh, we are looking, we have been conversations right now with establishing a fiscal agent, potentially working with a county or developing a 501(c)(3). We may in fact do all of those things in, in a, in a proper order. There's a grant due on November fourth to the PATH Foundation. Steph Ritter and I already had an opportunity to chat with the, um, PATH Foundation, they're very interested in funding this project, and they've funded this project in the past, these types of projects in the past in our neighboring communities. Um, we will apply for that, um, planning grant, the funds would become available in the spring of next year. We would then undertake a several-month planning, uh, process where we actually had someone come and, you know, some of who's built trails all around their community and do a feasibility study and a cost analysis. Uh, we'll be, um, having meetings for community input, um, and as Cliff said, uh, we would hope to be working with you all, um, on a county recreation access plan and preferably as part of the, um, comprehensive plan. Again, all of our neighboring, or many of our neighboring communities, certainly Faukeer County, um, Fairfax County, um, Prince William County, that are controlling counties, they all have these types of plans and we can put them together. So, and then next, um, there are some local examples that we just put up here, um, in Luray, they have a new Hoxville Greenway, um, which if you haven't been over there is very beautiful. And then next, um, in Warrington, you may have had a chance to see the Branch Greenway that has several extensions underway right now, one of them being funded by the PATH Foundation. And then, uh, the really, you know, my favorite example and, and frankly, my vision, if we could do it, would be the Virginia Capitol Trail, which is actually a fifty-five mile trail that connects, um, Williamsburg to Richmond, Virginia, and, uh, took ten years to complete all of those sections, but it's a, uh, a, it's a public, um, property or public path, uh, that's been very successful.
Thank you very much. I think, uh, because we do have a long agenda tonight, I think we won't take questions tonight, but I will, in the public comment session, I invite the public, who might have something to add to, to this, to, to do so during the, the public comment section, if that's all right.
Of course. Thanks for having us.
Okay, with that, uh, I, I will open, I believe we'll, we'll limit ourselves this evening to one public comment period, uh, because the other items on our agenda are, uh, all things that have been on the agenda before, uh, but feel free to address your comments on any of these things. I would appreciate if you addressed any comments to, uh, the commission and not to other folks in the audience, uh, and I'm not sure, there's a lot of people here tonight, I don't know if, uh, everyone's here to speak or not, but, uh, at least for our first round, let's limit ourselves to, uh, three minutes per, per comment. So with that, I'll open the comment period. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Formerly the main street extended, temporarily. Uh, perhaps you will, uh, most of you will remember the comments that I made some years ago as you began the firehouse, uh, conferences, where I would suggest that a biking, hiking trail would be absolutely necessary in this county for the future. Uh, we have good examples, and I have personal examples of the fact that there are many places where bicycles cannot go anywhere, there's no pavement for them. The white line on the right side of the road has no pavement, go right into the, into the gully or whatever you call it. And many, very many times, going over Testor Jack, uh, going up the hill, going on Forestack Road, over the hill when it was open, uh, bicycles would be just over the hill where you couldn't see them, and another car was coming the other way. Bicycle need to have a place to go. Uh, I think increasingly, we are in this country going to be relying on pedestrian-friendly paths and roads. People are not necessarily going to give up their automobiles, but increasingly, I think people are becoming, uh, aware of the fact that it's healthy and, uh, exercise to either bike or hike. We need to be, um, pedestrian-friendly in this county, especially if we're going to be attracting tourists. Uh, we need to have a little better pedestrian-friendly situations here in the town of Washington, and we certainly need to have some type of interconnectivity through the path. Five hundred miles of trails and a park, very few of them are bike-friendly, uh, some of them are, of course, with mountain bikes. But we need to have a trail system here in Rappahannock County that will connect the various areas that we can send people to. We have little trails here in town now, what we, Butterfly Trail or whatever nature trail. Uh, I think we can impose upon the Virginia Department of Transportation to come up with the answer. If you look at Route twenty-eight, for instance, uh, there's a separate path that goes down, which might be down, it's down there by the way. And if you look at other places, you will see about a four-foot or maybe five-foot width of pavement that has little diamonds on it, it's dedicated to bicycles and pedestrians, where they can be safe. I hope that we will encourage, as a county, VDOT to do something, because if they can do it very easily, they own the land. Wipe the pavement, put a lane on one side for bi-directional lanes, and I think that county can impose a lot of, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Ervin. Thank you for putting a good example. I should have mentioned that, uh, please, when you comment, identify yourself and, uh, your address or the district or your partner. Yes, sir.
Thank you. First time I've ever spoken, I'm talking about it, it'll damage my farm, and make a mess of it if they go back twenty feet off the road. Now, boy, he just said by putting another trail next to the highway in the medium strip, I'd be fine, but if you come on my side, you go twenty feet, you've got banks to deal with, and you're going to damage my farm, and I'm, and I'm, I'm not, I'm against it one hundred percent for somebody to have for the restaurant, and somebody's going to pay for it, if, yeah, the state going to pay for it? Who, who pays for it? That's what's wrong with the country now.
Sir, I'm sorry, you just called your name.
We're T. Waylon, Sperryville, Virginia. I'm a farmer, I've been here for seventy-four years, um, I'll fight it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hey, Jane Shaw, Washington, Virginia. I own a business in Sperryville. And I've talked to a lot, I see a lot of people, talked to a lot of people coming into business, and they say the reason that they moved to Rappahannock and wanted to have come in is for the scenery and the quietness of the area. Well, it's no way at my house, which is one-twenty-six oh-two, right on the highway, that you can come over twenty feet and you're going to be right in my driveway, matter of fact, right in my way. I own a small piece of property, and, and like I say, I don't even know where you could put it, you got to build two bridges. So I'm totally against it. Thank you, sir.
Listen, I'm Angela Zella, um...
I'm sorry, what is your name?
Angela Zella. Um, I'm one-two-five-four-six Lee Highway, I'm right on Main Road, and, um, I'm completely against it. Um, if you have any idea where my house is, it's a people house, it's on two-eleven, right next to the high school. Twenty feet off the highway is going to divide my property now. I have people that come up two-eleven all day, every day, all week long, throw trash out, living on two-eleven is not right. You get trash in your yard. I had the little boy come out and be in my front yard because his dad pulled his caravan over. I've had people come out with their dogs running my yard near the bathroom, living there is already a nightmare. Having people invited down the middle of my yard, and let's, you're going to have a bike path this big, let's say you've got nine, ten of your friends walking down, and you're going to walk military style down that path? No, you're not. You're going to have a few over my grass, you're going to have a few over my grass over here, you're going to have young kids riding their bicycle, you're not going to give a six-year-old a bike on that path, they're going to be in my yard. Dogs are going to be in my yard, this is going to be a nightmare. And it's going to be a nightmare for that's on two-eleven, and I've visited all my neighbors today, I go to the after park, says I don't get this at all. I'm going to fight tooth and nail.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this or any other?
Just to, just to add a different perspective, Jane McCalla, from Jackson District, um, having, I think essentially the idea of this is a wonderful thing for this county. Maybe the location isn't ideal, maybe that needs to be looked at, maybe it needs to be adjusted in some way so that it doesn't intrude on people who own property like that close, close by, or where it's going to be too close to their house. I lived on a bike path in Virginia Beach that was built on a, where, an old deserted rail path, um, that went from North up to Virginia Beach, and it was on the north, the northeast section of the city, and went to the ocean, about thirteen miles, and it was wonderful for that community and for that part of the city. It was a community builder. People walked there, pushed their babies, rode their bikes, walked. We had no, no trash, we were exceptions. We had no one abuse that situation. Our, our yard abutted the bike path, and we didn't, we honestly did not have a lot of abuse of it. So I think the point I just want to make is that as we go through this, rather than just saying, no, period, and I'm not going to support it at all, let the committee kind of work through some of this, and I think you're really not going to see the kinds of abuses that sometimes we think we're going to see, because we had, Virginia Beach is a huge city, and that was ripe for all kinds of abuses, and we just simply didn't see it. So I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak? Yes, sir.
Paige Glenn, Jackson District, different subject. In regards to, to the comprehensive plan, as I understand the state requirements, there's supposed to be analysis of how the land is being used. My understanding is that's very much out of date, all right? I beg you, please, to get the real estate report in Excel and have someone work on that analysis. I mean, what's happened to our, to our farms, how much is in this, how much is in that? We don't know. I mean, I assume Allos, I mean, Allos everything about the county, right? But, but we don't have that data, so it's hard, it's hard, it's hard to make those assumptions, all right? And furthermore, if you need someone to do the analysis, I mean, I'm good with Excel, I volunteer my services, whatever you need, all right? But please, just spend the three-hundred-and-fifty dollars it takes to get the Excel file, all right? So someone can do something with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Yes, sir.
I'm Heidi Dodd, I'm from Piedmont District. And my comments related to the proposed zoning amendments, which my understanding is you are discussing tonight.
Yes, we are.
Um, I think first, the timing of these changes seems rather curious in view, view of the Airbnb bill currently being based at the state level. Any changes that you make now might be irrelevant fifteen months' time, but more importantly, to me, it's unclear what's driving these proposed changes. In my view, the county has robust zoning regulations on books, and I'm talking specifically about those related to tourist homes and B and Bs. The BZA has...
To what? Sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm talking about the zoning regulations relating to tourist homes and B and Bs. The BZA has the authority to approve applications, it can deny applications, the county can revoke existing permits, and the BZA can also put restrictions in place when issuing permits, including putting an expiry date on permits. So I question the need for any additional standards or regulations, and in particular, any that go to the extent of these proposed amendments that I see now. For example, I would draw your attention to the proposed change to one-seventy dash sixty-six K four that seeks to increase the minimum acreage requirement for tourist homes by a whopping five hundred percent, from current two acres to ten acres. For B and Bs, the new proposed minimum would be twenty acres, up from five acres, that's an increase of four hundred percent. I'd like to know, what is the reasoning behind this? The county has known tourist homes and B and Bs for years, show me the list of tourist homes and B and Bs that are causing problems. Where are these properties that are having such an adverse impact on county that we need to make such huge changes to existing regulations? I'm personally not convinced they exist, and I think a number of these proposed changes seek to fix problems that the county doesn't have. What these changes will do is infringe on property rights in a big way and greatly narrow the universe, give the universe of properties even eligible to seek a specialty use permit. This seems, again, ill-timed in my view, as the county looks for ways to increase its funds and find shortfalls in its budget without raising property taxes, and as it looks to tourism to do so. I ask and urge you to look carefully at these proposed amendments, and I hope that if any changes are made, that they are based in facts and evidence and real issues and problems, not on fear, speculation, or a general aversion to growth and change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? At the beginning of your, uh, presentation, I didn't quite hear what you say, you was from the Piedmont District or with the Pecan City?
I'm from the Piedmont.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jane Shaw, I'm from the Hackett District, and I would like to see some analytics around our land use program. It's probably the most important program in the county. I understand there are approximately twenty-two thousand acres of land use, although most of it is, is done by tenant farmers. Uh, we have really no analytics around this program, whether it be scenic easements, where people then don't have to farm at all, uh, so we have, we have no farming and a decline in population, or we have land use, uh, where people are getting tax benefit, where other people who don't qualify for land use are not getting a tax benefit, and you have to be, no analytics around this program as to whether it's working or not. And I'd like to make a request that we, uh, put a little, we, we have a vendor to, that, that, that can do, can do this sort of work, and I'd like to make a request that we have a better understanding of how well our land use program is working today, given the fact that we don't really have a lot of large farms anymore. For the most part, we have people that land use for tax benefits and they have tenant farmers, um, and it's become a, a problem, and it's personally for me, if I'm anybody to cut hay, if he's got a smaller piece of property, no one wants, you know, for cows, and I would like to make a proposal that we do get some analytics around this and get some help. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else care to speak?
Okay, now... Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm just dropping, I'm with, uh, Henry's District. Uh, I noticed that the, it's on the tourist homes and B and Bs, I can, that's where Mrs. Dines, but, yeah, I'm inviting you to come to my house anytime.
Please, please, sir.
And, 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 uh, and see what happens when a limited land-owned corporation owns a B and B on a private lane, it's a nightmare. Uh, now we have, um, another possible B and B going in, both of which will have non-residents in Duponts. both of which will have non-residents in Dupuis. So not, not only do you have LLC, only five million, five million, but you don't even have a resident owner that you can go to. I, I would like the planning commission to look carefully at the B and B definitions and the, and tourist homes because nothing's better than, than having a neighbor that lives here. And nothing is worse than having a neighbor that's only there maybe five weekends a year and then fifteen weekends a year. Some, some other families are there that you don't even know. And, and so I, as long as it's not happening on your street, and this is not in my backyard, but I got two of these things in my backyard right now, and right up to here. And I'm not sure what we can do about it, but we'll see. I think.
Anyone else want to? Alright, thank you very much, and I'll, and, uh, close the public comment period. Gentlemen, the next, the three items on our agenda tonight are the adaptive use resolution, where we, I guess we've worked this issue but have not had a formal resolution of the, of the language. We also have some further work on the transient occupancy definitions, which I think actually includes the, several of the proposed ordinance amendments. And as time allows, we are going to discuss the comprehensive plan. I would like to suggest that we limit ourselves to a nine o'clock end, end time for tonight's meeting. And we kind of manage our time to, in, in that manner. And related to that, I think the last thing we're going to do is we'll try to schedule another longer work session to focus specifically on the comprehensive plan. So with that plan in mind, why don't we turn our attention to the wrapping up the adaptive use language, the board supervisor has distributed.
I, I didn't distribute. It's one that you all discussed and talked about, and it's been on board docs. And you approved it by consensus, but this needs to go to the board supervisors. So I'd like to see us do an official vote on this.
So, gentlemen, just to recap, the, we had modified the draft that was given to us by our county attorney to add the effective date of December first, nineteen eighty-six. We had, we added language to restrict adaptive use, so it did not apply to residential structures. We struck language about the potential return on investment, and we struck language that said existing structures usually, permits shall only allow the building to accommodate uses of equal or less intensive than previous uses. Those were the, were changes that we had proposed. Nothing new here, but I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution to send back to the, to the board supervisors. Looking for a motion or?
Well, at least, I see a problem with Chairman G under two, G one-seventy-sixty-nine, two G. That sentence still looks like it did a month ago.
Which one is that one?
G. One-seventy-sixty-nine, B, and it would be two G. It's allow property owners who are willing to undertake the preservation or rehabilitation of existing structures at their own costly opportunity.
So we want to strike the opportunity.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. I believe we did agree to that change at our last meeting. So the sentence should end after cost.
Well, that, that was one proposal, and I think another was to just break G.
In entirety?
I think we would, put the period there after cost, that's the definition. But it has success for, there's no public funding, I mean, from the cost, except for on the cost. So.
The county already has adopted, I don't think we've ever, but we haven't used it, but there is an offset of taxation for the renovation of property. So it's not, not, not using public funds, but you would offset your tax liability by renovating the property.
To me, the advantage to having this, or the value that it adds, is that it emphasizes the point, which is basically that this is a way to preserve and rehabilitate existing structure, which I think is sort of fundamental to the reason to have adaptive use provisions. So, you know, I'm comfortable with it just sort of grammatically correct and complete by putting permanent after cost, personally.
Do you do that?
Same thing you said.
So what are you doing? I, I, what, what are you doing?
That G would be to allow property owners who are willing to undertake the preservation or rehabilitation of existing structures at their own cost, period.
Allow them to what? You got a verb and you got no direct answer. To allow them to what?
At their own cost.
This is the question.
Which is to strike who are willing, and then you'll have a sentence.
Yes. There you go. It's kind of set off as a, kind of, this ought to have commas around it, but I think striking who are willing makes it more sensible.
And more of a radical, too.
To allow property owners to undertake the preservation or rehabilitation of existing structures at their own cost, period.
Yes.
So move.
Can we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is the transient occupancy definitions. And gentlemen, there are a couple of documents related to this. One is the, the table that we've been working with, and I think we have at least on board docs, a revised version of the table that kind of summarized our activities to date. And the other item that I was- the other item of information that I would bring to your attention is the kind of one-page document that was handed out before the meeting. You may recall at the last meeting that I agreed to work on some language that I would, what I would propose to get to the sort of structuring of the definitions that I was envisioning. That's what this one pager is. I apologize that that did not get shared or distributed earlier before today's meeting. It may be that I would, I'd be open to discussing that further or, given that it wasn't made available prior to the meeting and you're seeing it for the first time, perhaps we could move on to the other items and lead that to a, to a further date. So.
I'd like to-
Yes, please.
If you don't want to add, um, just one, I don't know if you have a copy of books on board docs, but-
I have it every week, every month.
Well, I, well, this is the latest one, so I'd like you to look at it and make sure that I have the corrections that we've talked about and have everything accurate.
Okay, thank you.
So gentlemen, I think what I'm going to suggest is that we, that we don't delve into these definitions that I just passed around now, and we have other items that we had been discussing. You know, I'm open to alternatives if people want to get into these, but I feel in some ways it's a little unfair to have sprung those on you without giving you or the public an opportunity to see them. So might I suggest that we proceed to the, it looks like we left off, let's see, what's his number, fourteen? Additional standards for spas and health clubs?
Mr. Chairman, before, before we go on, I just, I just want to make an observation of what, I mean, I saw what you did, and I know we're not going to discuss it tonight, and I think it's okay as far as it goes, but one of the comments that's over in the last column throughout when this was done, was like, when this started, when this process, the Airbnb legislation, I think, had passed. And then, as John McCarthy obviously pointed out, sometimes even after it passed both houses of the General Assembly, when it got to the governor's office, I don't know who, I don't know what happens down there, but they, they deferred it for a year. But now the year's almost up. And I gathered that it's going to come up again. And so here it is, October, and these changes haven't gone through it, so I think you ought to go back, I mean, John's comments were, maybe we should do this until we see what passes. And although initially I didn't necessarily agree with that, now I do, upon us, it's only going to be another couple of months, in January or February. Probably not going to get there yet, but I think the main thing is, the original proposal was to incorporate the definitions that were in the proposed legislation. And that's the one sort of shortcoming of the definitions that you did, just as a general matter, is that they don't track it. In other words, the General Assembly is going to be proposing to exempt Airbnbs that where it's, the owner lives there, and it's there, I think it says they're full-time domicile and place of residence. And those are going to be exempted. So I think we ought to think about, you ought to think about, having a definition that tracks that. And then, in other words, those, those are going to be exempt from local regs, except for a very limited number of things. Whereas the other ones that are non-owner occupied or not, or managed for where the owners, it's not their permanent place of residence and domicile, they are going to be subject to local zoning regulations. So anyway, that's all I'm going to say. But I think you ought to go back to thinking in those terms, because in a few months, and it seems like a kind of a waste to adopt a bunch of changes, and then two or three months after they're done, they're going to be like invalidated by the General Assembly's legislation, so.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Gentlemen, we have been down this path a couple of times. To me, we're either, my view is, we're either taking this on and doing it the way we think it should be done based on our local, and going to wait and then see if it gets changed by the state, or we should just wait and see what the state does and respond to it. But what I, I don't feel comfortable doing is trying to go ahead and modify our local regulations to try to match what we think the state is going to pass. That seems like, that truly seems like a waste of time. Seems to me we should be looking at this from the county's perspective and, and how, how we want to change it. I think it's a valid point, as has been made in the very beginning. We could be doing this only to see it overwritten, but it would only be partially overwritten. We will always have some local authority over these matters. It's just a question of whether the state will consider that. So I'm open to a suggestion as to whether we, I guess we have a couple of choices. We could continue to grapple with these specific changes, both the ones that are drafted here and some of the definitions that I proposed. We could skip those. I think there's some of these additional changes that probably are not, some of the changes that are before us are not, uh, actually, I'll take that back. I think all of the remaining changes that we've, that we've been looking at, other than perhaps the last one, filing of applications, is ultimately going to be touched by whatever legislation passes on the other legislation. I believe we've, we've addressed all of the proposed changes that are not related to that.
Mr. Chairman, I think we carried this rock pretty far away, so I need to get it to the finish line and sit on it. I mean, we've got it, we've got it there, I could just take care of it.
Keep going.
If you need to shut down, I need to see all the work we put through it, just fall by the wayside.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. I tend to agree with that. Any other, anybody care to take a different position and suggest that we table this matter? Now, have we been directed, I, I don't recall, have we been directed by the supervisors to take this on?
Yeah.
I believe we have been, so I think it would require a conscious, a conscious action to say, "Thank you, we've considered it, and we think it's a good idea not to do anything for now." So I think that would be responsive to the request of the supervisors, but I throw that out just because I do think it's something that should, should guide us in this matter.
It was a request by the board of supervisors, but it was not done in a formal resolution, but it was a report. So I don't know that the timetable of ninety days is necessarily required without the resolution.
Mr. Henry?
Oh, it was a report. Yeah, that's right. It was put in with the adaptive use, they amended the adaptive use, but it was part of the-
It's coming.
It's, it's part of ninety days.
Yeah, as I recall, there, there was a, there was a reference to it. There's not any, the, the written resolution, but, you know, I think, I understand that we got a mandate, which didn't seem to me to be particularly explicit, but it is what it is. Gentlemen, Mr. Henry, do you have any opinion or thoughts about Chairman's? Okay. Mr. Fraser, do you suggest that we continue, or do you?
No, I, I think that we need to continue because we, it was part of the same resolution with the adaptive use. Because there's no, there's no point in the, the ordinance still, but if there is a problem that, that some of this could likely change by, you know, next July, I mean, that's what, that's what is going to happen, no matter what the General Assembly does or doesn't do. If they do anything at all, it's going to affect us as a July one. And the supervisors could have this effective by December, as early as December.
Thank you. Mr. Bird, any thoughts on that?
I agree with Mr. Fraser. I think we ought to deal with it now, and if we need to change it, which it seems likely that we will, we will need to know how we need to change it then.
Okay. Well then, thank you. So returning to the matter at hand, I believe the next item that we hadn't delved into or resolved completely at least was the suggested change at one-seventy-sixty-five, additional standards for spas and health clubs. I think we're going to talk about the definition. I think we, I think we discussed and approved the definition of a spa, one-seventy-eight. But I believe, other than that, we were working through them directly, and I don't believe we've talked about the one-seventy-sixty-five. In any event, gentlemen, let's, what's been suggested is some additional standards that, uh-
With such use shall not be approved unless the applicant has a valid license under Title eighteen, Chapter seventy. The Virginia administrative term is the same may be hereafter amended if one is required or variance under twelve V C five dash four-six-two dash one-seventy, if applicable. Number two, all street parking for the use shall be in accordance with the provisions. Article nine shall not be located in any required front yard and shall be effectively screened. The insurance of the specialty use permit shall be conditioned on the applicant. Obtaining V dot entry requirement is required by the road design manual and other applicable state law or regulations are otherwise in line with V dot requirements, and the BZA may impose additional appropriate conditions to ensure that the permitted use shall not generate noise or other effects that are reasonably interfere with any adjoining land owner's enjoyment. His property or residence- owner's enjoyment, his property or residence, including but not limited to hours of operation.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Conley.
Please.
So, the mention of the special use permit, are you proposing any change in the metrics? The matrix?
I thought we did that, Ray, I thought we did these all three together, but yes, it was going to be...
Because right now, it's just spa as it's permitted in a commercial, general zone.
Right.
Is that a by right, are they by right uses?
No, it's not by right anywhere.
Okay.
Unless, it might be by right in the commercial zone.
That's what I thought, in the commercial general, by right, but maybe you're mistaken.
I don't know, I have to look up, I'm not sure I brought my original list, is that? I have some difficulty.
There is a...
Huh?
Add SP and rural residential five permitted in commercial, general, and highway commercial.
Right, and it's number, what, number seven?
So, we're going to add a line for spas, and make it, yeah, SP and special use permit in rural residential five permitted in commercial, general, highway, commercial, industrial, and then, and what's MHP, I don't know.
I don't know.
And not allowed in, the resource preservation zones?
No, not at all.
Not at all in conservation.
Conservation there.
Neither would.
I mean, that's what, that's what...
That's where we are now, but I couldn't remember the SP, so...
Right.
So, the SP would be in rural residential five, so it's not, and a spa would not be from, just like it is now, spa would not be permitted in a resource preservation zone.
Which now, it's being, it's been approved in the past as an accessory use, if it was used for only those residents, I mean, for the guest. So, if you were a guest, they could have a spa if it was just for those guests, they couldn't open it up to the public.
But there was no provision in ordinance to allow that. If it was only allowed in commercial, general, there was no provision to allow that.
Right, it was some administrative interpretation, I think. Yeah, I think what's happened here, Kurt, if I may, is that this has kind of grown out of an accessory use of a B and B, and now we're trying to define it as its own use, and that may or may not coincide with another use for something like a B and B, and I think that's a good move, that we should separate that use, because I think they are pretty distinct, and I certainly think we should be talking about them in conjunction, but I don't, I don't know that approving one of these changes necessarily means you, that we need to approve each of them, so I think we should talk about them individually. So, and what we were talking about is the additional provisions put forward.
If we're not going to tie stuff together like it's supposed to be, frankly, I mean, right now, automobile graveyard or junkyards are only allowed in industrial zone areas, but if I have a B and B and I want to have a junkyard in conjunction with my B and B, we're going down the same path. I mean, really, seriously.
Well, we have another provision on here that is to address accessory uses and structures, so, you know, I think they do kind of relate to one another, obviously, each of the different parts of this relate to one another.
But a spa is not allowed under accessory use?
Well, it wouldn't be now that it's got its own character. I think that's, I think what we're doing.
But it wasn't before, is what I'm saying. I mean, a junkyard would be the same issue. If I wanted a junkyard in conjunction with my B and B, and somebody else wants a spa, one's allowed in a commercial, general zone only, the other's only allowed in an industrial zone, but I'm in an agricultural zone with a B and B, and I want a junkyard. I mean, that's the same philosophy, and we can't be going there, because we're going to be in a mess. The zoning ordinance has to be used the way it's written, or I want a junkyard in conjunction with my B and B.
Kind of B and B guest.
I'm just, I'm just showing you how it can be misused, especially with people like me.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but I guess the question is, what are you proposing?
I'm proposing that we stop going down these little rabbit trails. The ordinance says what it says, I mean, we spent four hours a month ago on this, it says what it says, and that's the way it needs to be interpreted. We stopped going down these little paths.
Okay, so that's a matter of, you're still taking issue with how the current code's been interpreted, and I think what's before us tonight is how we want the code to read, is that...
Well, I mean, I think we all need to be on the same playing field, that if the ordinance says something, then that's, that's what it says, and that's the way it's applied. Because I'm telling you, it can be misused in a way that I just, you know...
No disagreement here, sir, but I think the matter before us is how we want the amendments to read.
Right.
And again, I think more to the direct point at hand, the language that's proposed for 170-65 would stand on its own as a separate consideration than the question of where these spas may or may not be required. So, in the interest of trying to be on the same page and moving forward, I'd still like to focus our attention, if you can, on the proposed changes to the additional standards of 170-65.
I find out the way that these are written. I'd like to see one thing somehow that I incorporated in here, and I don't think it's anyplace else, in that a spa and health club in the, in the, in the by right areas and SP areas, or anywhere they may be, they have to be located on the same road, so we don't get into a situation of activities like this on a private road that gets into maintenance with other people that may have homes on that private road, or things like that, that would support that.
Well, I mean, except for rural residential, I guess that's on the place of the road.
But there's no, there's zones that where it's allowed, even the rural residential, they're all on?
Well, I guess it could be rural residential stuff, I don't know.
I thought that the, I guess in my mind, I thought that this item three...
That's just the entrance, though.
It's just the entrance, probably.
That's just where it meets the highway, it could be a private road, it could be a private road that meets that, so, yeah, I think that's kind of...
Need our road standards?
Hmm?
Need our road standards?
No, just say it can't be on, it has to be on a state...
State primary road?
Primary road. You understand that?
Is item five...
Maybe make it, maybe make it the four, and make it four or five, because it's right over the highway, or else make it three and remember, whether you have a highway stuff all the time, would make sense. Actually, I'd make it three and bumping, I mean, two things, put it must, make, make three the new part that says it must be on a state secondary or primary road.
Real estate.
Because that's the only two, I don't have two, there's state secondary, highway and state primary. And then three would become four, and four would become top.
Okay, I'm fine with that one.
So, the language, as I understand it, and I also agree, would be, finally had, is that spas must be on the state primary or secondary highway. Is that clear? I guess, I'm still looking for a motion, if anyone is seeing their way clear to approve this. So, with that change, you're proposing that we approve it?
Yes.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? All in favor of recommending that change to Section 170-65 as amended, if I'm saying hi?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Given Mr. Frazier's point, maybe the right move next would be to go back and take a look at the suggested change at 170-36, where the spa, where the spas are allowed, it's on the two, three. Little of the fourth on number eight, number, it says number seven out in the right-hand column. Again, I think the easiest way is to look at the, it's a reference to 170-36. The proposed language would be to add a road designating that a special permit is required in rural residential five districts permitted in commercial, general, highway, commercial, industrial, and, does anyone know what an MHP district is?
Oh, I don't know.
And just to be clear, what are the categories, then, that are not addressed in the...
Agriculture conservation.
Conservation. Tony Norris refers to them both as resource preservation, so they wouldn't be allowed in either one.
And then there's the, I guess, the commercial village, is that, maybe that's what MHP, I can't remember.
MHP sounds a lot more like mobile home park than commercial village.
They have a mobile home park.
Actually, there's some, conservation, agriculture, rural residential five, rural residential two, residential village, commercial village, mobile home park, highway, commercial, industrial and general.
Should be a commercial village, too.
And that's P. I would think we want P under commercial village, right? It's a commercially zoned structure, commercially zoned use.
Commercial village allowed for BTS sales establishments, that's what they use.
So, the only SP we're allowing is in rural residential five, which I mentioned we're not allowing in R2 or RV.
Or conservation, or any conservation.
I guess the only change that I would, I'm ready to recommend is that we would add commercial village to the list of Ps.
Why wouldn't you allow it in the rural village, RVs, if you allow it in R5?
Yeah, I tend to agree that, because...
They have a big...
There's nothing else that's allowed under RV, except for office as a special permit, or carpers or carpentry, there's nothing else that's allowed in that, as in retail sales, under RV.
I would be fine adding those with a special permit, because I think you're right, there may be circumstances where the zone is upgraded to disallow it from the start. I think, very much, I wouldn't want to see those as permitted by right, but I could see having those additional things as a special permit.
With R2.
And we don't allow it in R2?
No, not as this is worded right now. Right now, the only, it's by right in commercial, general, highway, commercial, industrial, MHP, mobile home park districts, and commercial village with my addition. Should we consider each one one at a time, gentlemen, just so we're all on the same page, the zones?
I think it should be allowed with R2 also.
Okay, let's, just going from left to right in the various zones, conservation, any discussion about allowing these in the conservation zone, under any circumstances?
No.
Okay, an agricultural zone, any consideration of adding these in an agricultural zone under the special permit or special exception? See no indication of anybody wanting to make that case. R5 has been proposed, anybody have a problem with that being a special permitted use? All right. R2, Mr. Henry, I believe you're suggesting that it be added as a special permitted use under R2?
I was proposing both of them be permitted.
Oh, without even a special permit? I would have concern about not having them come in for a special permit in purely residential, so, all right. I would have a problem. I'm fine with having them as special current required uses under R5 or R2. I would not want them to be uses by right. So, can we, Mr. Henry, since you and I...
Well, more than likely, it's going to, you've got the one around Sperryville that has water and sewer, has sewer, and it could well be a parcel up there, but that's larger, would fit very nicely for use as a spa, because within a village area where you're going to have the traffic, and it's more appropriate to have a use like this in a village, to encourage a use like this in a village, and to encourage it, or to condone it in other areas, it just isn't natural. And if you are permitted, I don't see it, I kind of swallow my tongue when I say, you know, industrial, do you want to put a use like this in an industrial area, but we don't really have that much industrial, and we're probably never going to add to it, and so, you know, those two don't quite go together, but I see it going more with a, into a residential area than I do into industrial area.
Well, I agree with your point about industrial, but I think it would be a bad precedent to allow, certainly by right, to have such a commercial operation in residential zone. I think it, there, your example of Sperryville may be okay, but I don't think residential two zoning is limited to those areas, so, without further looking at exactly where those are, I'd be much more comfortable seeing it with a special permit.
Well, why would it end up there sometimes? It wasn't mentioned anyplace as a SP, I think.
Okay, so it sounds like at least you and I are in agreement that it should be added as a special permit allowed use in R2. Anybody disagree with that? Okay, continuing from left to right, residential village, Mr. Henry, by your arguments and by my thinking, it would be a similar...
Do a SP.
SP also in residential village. Commercial village, we already discussed, actually, yes, commercial village, we added. Commercial general, we already talked about.
Commercial village, is that SP or by right?
Permitted, probably. And then, I agree with your point about industrial, however, if there was really somebody who thought it was a good idea to put a spa in an industrial zone, I'm not sure why we wouldn't say no to that, in terms of just its land use implications.
The hard hat work or something, do it for work.
Mr. Henry, do you want to propose removing it, or are you okay?
The only property right now that's still retaining industrials and the old, classic assets, yeah.
And island plant.
Okay, I'd like to suggest that we keep it, since I'm not getting any strong movement to take it out. Highway, commercial is a permitted use, MHP, and I guess we would continue to require a site plan?
If you did put it in rural residential two, why would you put it in mobile home park?
We did, we did, oh, maybe, right, it shouldn't be a P, it should be a SP for mobile home park, if we're going to allow it.
Is there any mobile home there?
You stand for Lombardi's.
So, if we, if we, if we move...
That's not good, I don't know what design it is on.
If we make the special permit requirement to include all of the residential areas, mobile home park... Mobile home park, residential village, R2 and R5 under a special permit, and it's allowed by right under commercial, general, highway, commercial, industrial and, um, commercial village. And we're not allowing it under conservation or agriculture. Are we finished, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
And do we want to require a site plan? I would suggest that we do. So, could I have a, a motion on that, set of modifications?
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Gentlemen, why don't we try to take on the, the submission? Oh wait, we did do the submission requirements last time. Where are we? Okay, I guess the next up might be the accessory uses and structures. Ms. Kaiser, would you like to tee this up?
The recommendation is that, well currently it reads, I guess, guest houses are rooms for guests in an accessory structure, but only on lots of at least two acres and used only for the occasional housings of guests, of the occupants of the principal structure and not as rental units or for permanent occupancy as a housekeeping unit. And add to that, provided however, that if a guest house or rooms in a accessory structure has kitchen facilities, it shall be deemed a family apartment or efficiency apartment that requires a special use permit under this ordinance. We did decide at the last meeting that the guest houses would meet the square footage requirements, the others, I think it was eight hundred square feet, so we did determine and recommend that at the last meeting.
It seems to me that we're, this is still fairly muddled because we're dealing now with guest houses as their own items and now we're talking about them sort of separately as accessory uses.
The thing why you best propose, because as I understood, there are some places where Mr. McCarthy's interpretation was that even though it has, I mean, it's a standalone unit, it, it could be an accessory use. And so, so it's sort of rubbed out, I mean, that's why they provide it however it fits. If it has a permanent kitchen and it can be used as a standalone dwelling unit, then it should be, have to get a special use permit as either an efficiency apartment or family apartment. But apparently there were some that were being allowed and I personally never understood on exactly what basis they were being allowed as an accessory use. So the purpose of, of adding that language is to make it clear that that is not allowed, that you have to get a special use permit.
Okay, so.
If, if it's got permanent kitchen facilities. I mean, somebody wants to have a bedroom in the garage or over the garage and just a bedroom and a bathroom for guests, that's an accessory use. But when you put a kitchen in and it can be used as a stand, because there's no way to police it, that's the other thing. Once you build that, if you let a building and has a kitchen in it or kitchenette or whatever you want to call it, the next thing you know, I mean, how's the zoning administrator supposed to go up there, what's supposed to go riding up there every weekend and see who's there and, you know, as we've heard, she's got enough to do. So this makes it clear from the plans or from whatever that they can't, if it's got kitchen facilities, then it's got, then it's not an accessory use anymore.
And I would like to add to that, that the comm, uh, commissioner of revenue is valuing these as a dwelling because they have both a kitchen and a bathroom. So if somebody starts out with a kitchen and a bathroom, say in a garage, and we give them a building, an occupancy permit to live there until the house is built, we make them go back and take out either the kitchen or the bathroom so that it's not livable. But guest houses really are dwellings because they do have both. And so we have ran into several recently where there's been two dwellings on property that technically they didn't get a permit for.
Gentlemen, I was saying, I was blessed enough to have my mother-in-law come with me and I was to finish off my basement and put in quite literally a mother-in-law suite with a mini kitchen.
Downstairs?
Downstairs.
Same houses, isn't it?
If it's on the same house.
If it's in the house, it's not an issue, but if it was in a, a joint detached garage.
A detached garage with separate entrances.
So, the way this is. Uh, I don't see how that would, it seems to me that the way this is currently proposed to be worded, it would catch your basement apartment for your mother-in-law.
No, because it's not an accessory structure. It's not a separate structure.
Yeah.
It says right in the first line, in an accessory structure. So if it's in Jason's basement, that's not an accessory structure, that's the principal structure.
So I guess we're, at that point, talking about multi, I mean, I guess the question is, is there some point which will up against multi, multi-family uses or something like that? That's a different, that's a different path.
Good structure, correct.
Okay.
Well. I guess what we've done in the past is that you could have a kitchen or a bathroom, you couldn't have both. So, you know, it may.
No, I'm comfortable with it, I just wanted to ask for a point clear. I agree, I think it's written well, I was just.
So the point is, we're not prohibiting it per se, we're just requiring that in order to get this period coming in with a special use, so you don't have to consider what's going on.
This, this issue, I was on the board of equalization, and this was probably the biggest issue that we dealt with, in that people came in, questioned their second house, and the reason for that is that the assessors put a lot value under that, that guest house, usually in between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars, that second house, and we, we found that sometimes it was justified, but more than likely, it was not in that it was finished heated area, but it was either lacking a kitchen or a bathroom and that people were applying, but the assessors were seeing something that looked like a dwelling and they automatically called it a dwelling. So we rolled back probably twenty or thirty assessments to help with that.
And that would only be, again, one, two structures on one parcel? Because if they were separate parcels, we'd be in a different situation. All right, well, starting, starting to sense that there's consensus here, I'm comfortable with the verbiage as, as proposed, I do see now how it fits in. So gentlemen, I refer to entertain a motion from the committee.
I would recommend adoption of this by supervisor. Absolutely.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. All right, gentlemen, it's five till nine. I'd like to suggest we cut this off there and move our attention to scheduling our next work session where we turn our attention to the on-site plan. I had, it does not seem that we have any particular proposed dates. I would just suggest, gentlemen, that given my work routine, Mondays and Fridays are the days that I'm generally here. I don't know if anybody else has any structural constraints that we'd like to work around, but I would request that we begin our focus with Mondays and Fridays unless anybody objects.
Fridays and Tuesdays.
We're about to come for the eighteenth. I remember the eleventh is Veterans Day. We have a planning commission meeting on the sixteenth at night. That Friday, we can do an afternoon.
Don't worry if anybody else have any objections to, I think the way we did it last time worked pretty well, where we did an afternoon session that was, gave us enough time and, you know, it wasn't, I think an all-day session is still too much, an afternoon would probably be reasonable. So just.
The front row.
But, oh my, you're suggesting the eight, you don't know that. That will work for me, so let's, gentlemen, let's save our work session and we'll announce it at a time appropriate, Ms. Kaiser, for one to five on Friday, November eighteenth. Here again.
If we can get it, I'll let you know, we'll have to check with the torts.
If you, if you can't get it here, you want to do a lottery at work. Yeah.
Gentlemen, I, if you take a motion, it'll be adjourned.
So move.
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand. Thank you very much.